Teams committed that are national and all eighty percent of, greater than eighty percent of the wildland firefighting resources committed. That other twenty percent that's not, you know, reflected in there is usually on R and R, days off after a long fourteen or twenty-one day assignment, and recycling back into the system. And that's where we're at right now compared to this level five. There are sixty-four, currently sixty-four large fires occurring, plus initial attack, new fire starts occurring every day. And so the, you know, the wildfire season this year, which is a year-long, a year-long thing, no matter where you're at now, is, is very busy, it's very complex, and it's just a very troublesome time for, for a lot of us. And so, but tonight, we want to focus right here in Thompson Falls on what, what's going on here with the Thorn Creek Fire. And the three things I wanted to talk about opening up this evening was, one, you know, there was a lot of concern about the, the use of aircraft and what kind of aircraft we were using on this fire. And as of the end of shift last night, keep in mind, we have been using aircraft all day today, so the numbers I'm going to give you are, you know, from last night. As of last night, we had dropped twenty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven gallons of retardant from fixed-wing aircraft. And then that's also boosted by eighty-two thousand, well, almost eighty-five thousand gallons of, of water from helicopters. And number of flight hours involved in that, and also flight hours for recon and to support our operation. So I just wanted to let you know that we are using aviation. And an analogy that I'd like to share with you, though, is build a bonfire in your backyard. And then walk into the house and, and grab one of those cups out of the, out of your kitchen cabinet, fill it with water, then go outside and try to put your bonfire out with that. That is what happens when you put helicopters on a fire. We have to use them very strategically to support the tactics on the ground. In other words, we can use those, those aircraft, whether it be retardant or water dropping, to, as a delaying action, or we can marry them up with firefighters on the ground to fully suppress fire. And so I just wanted to bring that to light real quick. Another thing that was talked about is, that was, has been mentioned several times, and we mentioned this last time, that this is a full suppression fire, yet you don't see us getting up there and getting after it. And you don't see fire being put out. We reflect a zero percent containment. And when I step back and look at that as a non-firefighter, I understand where your questions come from. So let me address that directly here this evening. And this, this fire is being, is a full suppression fire, but it has an indirect strategy. All of us, myself included, that grow up in the fire world, when we have, when we pull up on a wildfire, the first thing we really want to do is go direct. We want to anchor that fire, we want to work a flank, turn the head, and, you know, slam that fire down. That's where we want to go. But we have to step back and do what's right. I want to point you to incident objective number one, that is, it wraps itself around incident responder and public safety. There's a lot of things that myself, as an incident commander, I try to place a balance on. The one thing there is no balance on is protection of life, whether it's incident responder or the public. And given the fire environment that's right up over the top of this hill behind us, it is pretty risky business, especially with the number, a few number of resources we have committed to this fire for us to attempt any direct action in decadent lodge pole with a heavy dead-down component in it. It's very challenging conditions for us to, to place fire, uh, incident responders in. And although, I will tell you this much, we are looking at every opportunity to minimize the footprint that this fire will ultimately have. I can assure you that. I can assure you that also that we have several conversations about the strategy, and then ultimately the tactics that we employ on the ground, and they're, they're hard-truth conversations. The folks that are up there are pros. They're not afraid to tell us the truth. They're not afraid to tell us what their opinion is and their thoughts are, and what they see on the fire line and opportunities that they see that we can take advantage of, and we discuss every one of those and weigh them out. And the final thing I wanted to tell you, and I was prompted at the, the last community meeting, you know, I will say this, thank you very much for that prompting. And I think you will, I think you will appreciate this, what I'm about to share here, is I did not know how to mobilize the National Guard in Montana. If you look at my shirt closely, it says Oklahoma Forestry Services. I work for the state of Oklahoma. And so, you know, I, I do have some, I've fought a lot of fire on the Lolo National Forest over the course of my career. I'm twenty-seven years deep in it right now, and have traveled the country in, in fighting fire. Over the course of that time, I have met some very trusted comrades here in the state of Montana. And I called one of those, one of those very close and trusted friends and, and told him, I need to ask some ignorant questions, and I ask you to replace my ignorance with truth and knowledge, because this is something I feel is, will help to propel our plan forward and protect the values at risk in Thompson Falls. And that, that question that I asked was, how do I go about properly mobilizing the National Guard? And, or, or beginning that process? And so we did work with our, our cooperators, and to that end, we have successfully placed orders for some National Guard resources that will, that we will use in our logistics section, so they will help with camp security, some of the, the roadblock maintenance, delivering fire, the needed fire supplies out to the fire line for the firefighters to use, such as pumps and hose and other miscellaneous supplies. They will be boosting our resources with that. And then as you were pulling in, if you saw me with the computer on the dashboard, an iPad on the, on the, on the window and on the phone, we were working out and just placed, this is, this is some of the best news of the day for me, was just able to place orders for three Type II National Guard firefighting crews. And so we will be, yes. So they're not here yet, and, but we just got to successfully place those orders, and we are expecting them within the next seventy-two hours, and they will be utilized to hold the fire line that we've already got in place up there. And by holding, what does that mean to you? If we hold that line, we increase the containment of that line, then we can return those areas back into an evacuation warning instead of an evacuation order. That is our goal. And I just wanted to be very specific on those, those three things. Again, they were based around questions or comments that, you know, I, I felt we, you know, just didn't have the answers for, although we spoke truth. I wanted to provide you with additional input as we opened up this evening. So with that, I'll ask Sheriff to come up and, and share some things with you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'll give you, get you up to speed here on some things that we've been doing in the sheriff's office. This week, I've kicked off what's called Project STAR. And that is a mutual aid request through the Montana Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association. And it's set up for guys like me, sheriffs, with a large jurisdiction and not a lot of guys, not a lot of deputies. So I put out the request, I, I had talked with Drew about this and what we're looking at on the fire as far as roadblocks that we're going to need. And so I tripped the trigger on that, and I have received eight deputies from outside counties. Those counties are Ravalli, Gallatin, and Flathead. So you're going to see some strange patrol cars around here. Just take it in stride. These guys, I want you to know, carry the full weight of a county, Sanders County deputy. They are here under my authority. So respect them accordingly, please. They're here to help us, they're here to take the strain off the sheriff's office. So we'll have these guys manning roadblocks, and then there'll probably be another one that's working in conjunction with our night deputy on night patrols. For you folks that have evacuated, we take a hard-line stance on that. You've made the, the choice to leave your home. We've made the choice to make sure that it's protected, all right? I have zero tolerance for anybody that's around or on your property without your permission and is looking to do no good. That's criminal trespass to property, and they'll get a, get a room at the Crowbar Hotel. So Drew talked about National Guard troops. Guys, they're not here to do anything but help, all right? They're not, they're not here to cart anybody away or do anything like that. These guys are support for us as the sheriff's office. You may see them on roadblocks, depending on how Project STAR works and how many, how long I can keep these deputies, because these deputies are from another county, of course, they're here on their days off. So they're going to have to go back at the end of their day, days off and pick up their regular shift and cover their home turf. So we're kind of at the, at the mercy of what's going on in the state of Montana in law enforcement, and there's a lot of other counties out there that are up against the same thing that I'm against. You've got a big fire, you don't have many deputies, and you're, and you're screaming for help. So these guys are even spread thin. So these National Guard troops are going to, excuse me, backfill that, so to speak, along with camp. They're going to be down there camp with security, you know, logistics support, things like that. They're going to be ferrying tools and supplies to these fires. That just frees up somebody else that can go work on that fire and doesn't have to worry about transporting hoses and pumps and tools and things of that nature. And along with it, they got three hand crews. So I fought a little fire in my history, been a long time ago, but you've got to have somebody to do mop up. Not everybody's out there digging line, especially in country like this where it's so dangerous to get in there on it. Like Drew said, you'd like to get in there and attack it, but it's so dangerous that they can't do it. So as they, as they get this, as they get this fire back down to this cat line in here and get it tied into that, then it'll be black from the cat line up the hill, and it's not going to re-burn. So at that point, you've got to have somebody come in and mop up all them hotspots. That's what these National Guard, these three hand crews are going to do. They're going to help these guys out in that manner. As they back, bring this fire down to this cat line and get it black, then you folks that are under evacuation orders will, will be able to lift that, because then it'll be safe by your home. So we'll be able to look at getting you folks back in there. And this is going to be a kind of a rotation, I guess you could say, because these guys are working west to east on backing this fire down. So as they bring it down more towards where we've determined like Hawthorne, or I mean, Harlow and Ashley, as they, as they're working that direction, then the people in Cougar and Graves will be allowed to return to their homes. So it's going to progress across like this as we go through this process. But these guys are fighting this fire the only way they know how. They can't go direct. They've got to go with this indirect approach. So the evacuation orders, of course, are on Cougar Creek, south, east of Blue Slide Road, the east side of the power line in Harlow, and the northeast side of the power line in Ashley. The pre-evacs are still on the west side of Blue Slide Road, and then, and that also in Graves North and Graves South on the west side of Blue Slide. So we're going to try to get you folks that have evacuated, we're going to try to get you back as soon as we can. We're going to go to a pass system, so for you folks that have evacuated, you're going to, as you come up to a roadblock, you'll have to establish that you do live at such-and-such address. You'll be given a pass card that'll look like something like this. West Lolo Complex Thorn, Thorn Fire Resident Access Permit. Okay? That just helps us sort out who belongs there and who doesn't. So it'll make it easier for us. And then we've got some hours that we've established, you know, for, for re-entry, or, excuse me, for potential hours. We're setting nine to noon, and along with these re-entry cards, nine to noon allows you, will allow you time to get back in there and get your stuff, do some, whatever you've got to do there. But it keeps you out of the way of the, of these fire crews, that when you stop and talk to these guys, that's less time that they have to be devoted to what their job is, and that's fighting that fire. So I'll be around afterwards, I'll be ready to take your questions.
Good evening, everyone. Andy James, planning operations. And I was told that I have to stay in one place. I kind of moved around too much, so if you see a handler come up here and grab me, that's what's going on. I don't plan to, to slip out. I see a lot of familiar faces. I'm, I'm happy to see you guys return. I see Trent back there, who I've visited with, lives over around Weber Gulch. Sent a really nice email to the PIO shop, I received that. Thanks for those words, and if we get a chance after, I'd sure like to visit with you again. Mr. Allen, I don't see him here at Allen Ranch, he stopped at DP-10 the other day and had a really nice conversation about what we were doing up on the hill and, you know, how busy the guys and gals were, you know, trying to get this thing under control. So it's, it's nice to develop relationships, but then, you know, at the same time, you know, we want to get this thing buttoned up so we can get you folks back in your homes and we can go back to our homes ourselves. So I wanted to start off with a, a success story. After our last meeting, you know, I mentioned, we did not have any crews. We had engine resources that were either being loaned or borrowed for neighboring districts, neighboring forests. So it really was a struggle to be able to staff everything that we needed up top. Drew's leadership and his determination and his drive led to us getting Craig Hotshots out of Colorado and a Type II crew. We immediately plugged them in. Craig pretty much worked the twenty-four hour shift up on Cougar Peak to keep that in check and keep that thing in place. And then last night, with the way that the fire moved, I know everybody was familiar with that, I went to Drew and I said, you know, we've got to push this again, we've got some connections with Northern Rockies Coordinating Group, and as a result of that, we got two more Type II IA crews. And so Type II IA crews are not as good as the, the Type I crews, but they're pretty close. They come with leadership, they come with SAWs, they come with, you know, a lot of advanced training, and they can, we can really put them in places that we can't put a lot of our normal Type II crews. So they showed up today, and before I came out, I got those folks briefed, we got them supplied, and we put both those crews down here on Division Zulu, which is obviously one of our critical pieces, to help hold and mop up and patrol and keep that in check. So we're trending in the right direction, you know, with a Type I team coming in, that's going to, that's going to help us, you know, to ramp up on the priority list and to be able to get a flow of more consistent resources in here, which is really what we need to be able to fulfill the plan that we've had in place. So like last time, I'm just going to kind of go around the horn and talk about accomplishments. Up here on, on Division Echo, Juliet, I'll start in the north end. Continue to work on this heavy equipment line that's going up Sundance Ridge. We have two heavy equipment task forces that are up there. Probably have about two more days, and then they're going to run into an area that cliffs out, we can't utilize heavy equipment anymore, so they'll turn around, come back down and improve that. And now we're going to kind of fall back into a recon mode, where we're going to look for opportunities to establish some contingency lines and some, and some alternate lines and some check lines to be able to work with, especially with the way the fires moved the last couple of days. And for those of you that live here and know this country, it's tough. And would love to say that we're going to be able to get up there and be able to check that up, but, you know, we continually do that. You know, we get our resources engaged, and then we start looking for opportunities. But up there, tough country. Moving down below in Juliet, this piece is, is all ready to go, it's all completed. West Fork Road, did the machine line on that, took some volley mobs in there, removed the snags. And then really, the only thing that we had to do on Thompson River Road, we've got Copper King Community, we've got Snyder Community, we've built some hand lines around those houses, plum those with hose lays, have some pumps, and so those are, those are ready to go. So really, at this time, Division Juliet is not staffed. Moving around to Division November, if you remember last time, we didn't have any folks to staff November. Since then, we've got a handful of engines in, and they have completed all the prep work from Weber Gulch all the way down to the mouth of Thompson River Road, and we've got all that plumbed. Going to go back and continue to just, you know, check those hose lays, make sure those pumps are running. That's something that's done, you know, a couple of times a day. And then just going to continue on, on those pieces of line that went through some of the heavier timber. Go and check that, see if there's any snags we missed, any more additional prep work that we can do that will help us in control efforts. Moving into Division Zulu, as you can tell, we've got a lot more red, a lot more fire that we've brought down to the indirect line and have held. But, you know, that's good and bad. It's good that we've held that, and we've, and we've got some really good control features in place, but we're getting spread out really thin, so that's, that's, that's caused us to have to slow our tempo down just a little bit with some of our other operations. Moving up here to Division Charlie, the, the fire got lined up a few days ago, pushed across Grave Creek Road, had a, had a thunderstorm that surfaced southwest of the fire, had outflow winds, and got lined up with fuels and terrain and blew across the road. Fortunately, we, we got aircraft up quickly, got it checked up in some rocks on the top end, and the last couple of days, we've just been working to secure that on some dozer line that we connected between some of the switchbacks on Cougar Peak Road, and then this, this big piece of indirect machine line that we brought all the way down the ridge to Graves Creek Road. So we still have a night operation that, that's in effect, and those folks are doing most of the, most of the burning. You know, they've got one of the, one of the top toughest jobs. They, they come on at, at four o'clock in the afternoon and get briefed, and then they get handed off typically, you know, kind of, kind of a mess. And then, you know, they, they work with operations, work with the day shift, and, and go in and continue to, to bring fire down the line, or sometimes it's just a matter of, you know, holding what day resources did. It's, you know, there's a lot of give and take between what we're doing during the day and during the night to, to ensure that we've got coverage throughout both shifts and that we don't bite off more than we can chew and really leave a problematic area for the folks coming in the next day. So, you know, all in all, it's, you know, it's, the fire has moved around, but, you know, it hasn't done anything that we didn't expect, and, you know, we continue to get more resources in. Been told two more crews coming in tomorrow, and Wyoming Hotshots will be here at noon tomorrow, and they will be up on the line probably by thirteen hundred, if I have anything to say about it. So good seeing everybody again. If you have any questions, I'll be up here afterwards.
Good evening. Jenny Perth, Air Resource Advisor, and I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk about the smoke. I know that for a couple of weeks, there was low-level smoke, moderate smoke, and then a couple of really heavy smoke days. Air quality has been unhealthy with some periods of very unhealthy in there, and so the combination of just the long-term low level and this, this really dense smoke. Be sure to take care, try and take care of yourselves, get out of the smoke if you can. You know, get up to like Flathead Lake, their air quality's been really good there. And, and, you know, try not to exercise too much in this heavy smoke. So that was the bad news. The good news is, there is some clear air coming. Hopefully, it could be as soon as tomorrow afternoon, evening, more likely Sunday, but first you're going to have some, we're going to have some transport winds that are going to blow the smoke up and out of here, and then we're going to get some of that wetting moisture to clear the air even more. And you'll get at least two or three days of, of breather before it starts heating up again. And yeah, we'll, we have smoke outlooks coming out daily, you've probably all seen those. There's some links on there if you need more information or if you have any questions, I'll be available afterwards.
Dave Mayer, everybody. Bill Negley, your emergency manager. The sheriff, sheriff went over the evacuation pretty good, I just wanted to go on from there. If anybody still has any trailers or boats or campers that they need to get out. The mayor has made available the parking lot at the softball field out by the high school, not the one out by the high school, but the one down by the search and rescue building. And the open, is that right? The Baptist Church, open door Baptist Church out here by S and S also has a space in their parking lot, and they also have, you're welcome there, your evacuation, evacuating. Also, the Red Cross has a shelter set up at the community center, and we have snacks and as most, as much current information as we can there, and you can also get some food. So that's with the Red Cross at the community center. I think that's about all I have. We have the evacuation map over here. If anybody's in question whether you are in that pre-evac or, or out of it, come over and look at it after the meeting.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Upton. I'm the forest supervisor for the Lolo National Forest. The Plains-Thompson Falls Ranger District is one of the five districts of the Lolo in western Montana. And I just have to tell you how pleased I am to be here tonight, to be able to see you and tell you how much I respect your, your communities, your county, Sanders County. I want to thank the sheriff for being here tonight with our team. Two of your county commissioners are here, Tony Cox and Carol Booker. There's members here in the audience from the police department, the emergency services, and several other important organizations to you and your communities. We are here because of you. I did a tour today, I went around and, and looked at where the fire's going, I saw the houses, the private lands, the interface, and our ability to be successful in serving you is, is so critically important to me, and I, again, I'm glad to be here and be able to tell you that. I have one other message for you, and this is a hard one to deliver, it's the reality of COVID. I have, I, I watched sort of some things going on nationally within the Forest Service. When COVID gets into a fire crew or a district office, it can, it can make those crews in those districts basically unable to function. Between sick people, really sick people, and folks in quarantine, this is a very real thing. One of my objectives when we briefed the team today is the importance of keeping COVID out of this camp. You look at all those black shirts and the green shirts around here, if we get COVID in there, their ability to serve you and your communities is going to go down dramatically. So we, when we come together in these small groups later, if our folks are kind of, you know, trying to keep a little distance, it's because of the importance of keeping COVID out of that camp. And our crews, we're going to talk, we talked a lot about the crews coming in, the, everyone from the hotshot crews to Montana National Guard, we're going to keep these folks as separate as possible, right? Because if COVID gets into any one of them, maybe it'll affect a smaller group, but not everybody. Okay? Lots of folks working very hard to suppress this fire, protect the communities, the private lands, your homes, your businesses, and it's really, really important to me that this group stay, be able to stay here and stay safe. I will stay around after, I think I'm last. Oh, and I also want to mention, that's why we're here in this heat. We have to have our public meetings outside, again, because we're trying to keep a little distance between folks, and we'll likely keep doing this, so that we can interact with folks and do it as safely as possible. With that, I'm going to pass it back to Shelley.
Thank you very much, Carolyn. We are so happy to meet you in person and to have you here. I'm going to open it up to a few questions. If you could just say them really loud, because I'm hard of hearing.
Abbott, here we are. Who's in charge, your air crew?
Our air operations.
Who is it? Raise your hand.
Our air operations, ma'am.
I'm not going to make a complaint. I was at my house on Cougar Peak, down below Cougar on Blue Slide, eating my hamburger, and that guy flew by so close to me, he turned on his windshield wiper washer and got my butt.
We just heard a great joke about air resources, so thank you, sir. Questions?
I've got a question, I've got a question, I just made a statement. I'm seventy-two years old, and I don't like what's going on here. I don't like it. I don't know, are you in charge?
Okay, so we're just going to take some questions really quick, if anybody has a question.
Why are they bombing with all that? And then as soon as it gets out, they call in all the big aircraft to put it out. Why don't they put it out with that equipment?
We'll have our incident commander answer. Why are you putting the fire out?
That's what we are working on. So the-
That's what we are working on. So in that indirect strategy, you know, we have this fire that's up high and we're having to-
You created that fire.
I'm sorry?
You created it.
So the fire was lightning started, but the, what we have to do in this indirect strategy is we need to bring the fire down in a controlled manner. So we are using firing techniques to try to do that in a controlled manner.
The fire started over here by Graves Creek, up Thorn Creek, and now it's gone across
Squaw, yeah, into Meyer.
Is it because we're trying to do a controlled burn with all the assets?
No, that is not, we are not trying to do a controlled burn with all the assets. Again, that's, this is part of that indirect strategy. And I could talk to you more specifically about this afterwards. But what we have, we do not have the number of resources to go direct on this. We would need 20 hotshot crews and a bunch of heavy equipment that we, we can't marry up to get up to where some of these, the fire edge is through some of the fuels that we have. You are very familiar with this, Eric Country. I'm sorry? So, I'm sorry? A week ago. So, yeah, that, and that's, so when we first got here, we were delegated, we had actually nine fires that we were attacking and plus we took on two more. And the, the fire up top at Thorn and then the Winnymuck Fire, there was two fires up there that joined, were 250 acres in the first, the first burning period. And what we ended up doing was, we ended up, were given a prioritization of the fires. We attacked those fires in progression. And now we're to Thorn Creek is the only one left out of that 11 that we, the 11 that we originally were charged with suppressing.
My name's Rodney Harmon, and we're fixing to have another problem. I mean, you're outrunning your resources with the fuel emissions. And we understand the backfiring. But like you say, we have to help those crews in place to take care of that. And right now, you're in Zulu and you're coming close to November and wanting to start it prematurely. I mean, the town is going to suffer from the smoke and as well as, I live in an airface, and I'm not worried about myself. I could die tomorrow and that's okay. But you need to slow down a little bit. You need to slow down as a community. We need for y'all to slow down. I mean, you're, you're attacking, when you do a backfire, you backfire from one, I, I did not go to school and I did not study flames and how they're affected. But I do have common sense. And a lot of people here do have common sense.
Right on.
And I think you need to take a step back. As the fire comes down, you want it to stop the fingers. It takes more fire lead to stay on a fire line on a continuous line than it does a finger line. These fingers are going to come down. They're going to burn islands. And those islands will burn out. And you can stop these fingers a lot easier than you can for five miles of continuous line.
If that, if those fingers are in favorable fuels.
That's true. That's true.
If those fingers are in favorable fuels.
And if we don't get the wind, which we can't predict.
Right.
It was a natural fire, and we're not treating it naturally right now. We're trying to save lives. I want to save my own.
Right.
I don't even have insurance on my house, but that's okay. I chose to do that. But I don't choose to start fires where they don't need to be started.
Please feel free at the end to come over and talk more with the incident commander. Any? Yes? How many acres was the fire on July 23rd?
2,400 acres. Started aerial ignition in how many? 13,000 acres. They moved resources off the Harlow Ranch to go over to Cougar Peak. And they left Harlow Ranch to defend themselves at the bottom of the ridge. They don't have the resources to keep burning all the way around town. This is my dad. I agree. We live up there. We've watched it. We know how fire burns downhill.
Listen, 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 folks, folks.
I'm addressing my community, please, for a minute. Fire burns downhill, okay? At the top of Thorn Creek, it hasn't really gone more north or northeast yet where it started. So it's slowly back-
Sir, can we talk, can we talk after?
The community does not know, and that is racism here. I've talked to several people in the community that don't know that aerial ignitions are bringing the fire across. And I do thank Andy, I do thank Andy for taking my questions. I spent 30 minutes talking with him last time. And he answered my questions. But Squaw Creek is an open, it's not fuel, and as they lit ignitions, they keep bringing it around. And you guys are gonna be limited smoke for three weeks, really heavy smoke for the next three weeks.
Hey, hey Trent. Hey Trent, we, we haven't used aerial ignition in a couple of days because we have recognized that we're, we need some lag time to be able to catch up. But then also, this, this stuff in Graves Creek, which was not a result of the ignition operation, we had to focus attention up there because this is, you know, we've got to secure this anchor point up here along Cougar Peak.
You've got boots on the ground. I will not give you their name. They're working for the National Forest. They're running pumpers and there are boots on the ground. And I said, what do you think? And he said, we don't need any more ignition fired up by. And if I need to give you his name, I would, but I don't want to get him fired. Because all your people that's on the ground don't want any more fire out there.
Nope, nope, nobody's gonna get fired. And, you know, I would hope that we're, you know, open as an ops section, as an incident management team, there's somebody, you know, is not comfortable with the tactics that we're employing and direction that we're going that, you know, we could sit down and have that conversation. Pardon? We, we're adjusting it, you know, almost daily. And like I said, we have not used any aerial ignition in two days. And that was, you know, a reaction to, you know, the situation that we were given with fire movement, but also with, with lack of resources. To my knowledge, they were not, they were not putting any fire down in Meyer Gulch. And, you know, looking at, looking at Meyer Gulch, you know, this spot that we got here in Squaw Creek, that's a result of the fire just moving around on its own. And that- Not, not all this, Trent. It's not, it's not a direct result of all of our PSD. I'm being honest with you here, okay? I mean, this fire continues to make runs in different directions that, that we have not put fire on the ground. Understanding that. And that's, that's still part of our focus is if we can continue to check this down. And maybe we get this moisture coming in next week, and that's gonna give us an opportunity. But, you know, I'd like to visit with you and your dad afterwards, if you guys have time. And I want to hear your concerns, and we'll see what we can do to address those. Probably just doing a recon to see where the fire had, had positioned itself. Now, there, there's my counterpart who, who's out on the fire line. You can't see what the fire's doing from down below. So we use, we use an aero platform to get up to do the recon. Like I said, I, to my knowledge, I don't know if they put that down. And I, we've been in transition today with the team. We've got resources coming in. So I will follow up on that and get you an answer. I'm not, ma'am, I was not raised that way. And I apologize if that's the way it's coming off. But I'm being, I'm being forthright with you.
Okay, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna go ahead and break up here in a second. I do want to close up the, the microphone piece here. And- So we did have a wind event.
My name's Alan Reynard. I live over on Cherry Creek. I used to have a piece of hot ash land on my shirt. Now the fire, the wind blows that ash all over. It could start the fire from a very small piece of ash. Yes, they have started fires for backburns. But they ain't all from that, folks. Watch your own yards.
So let me, let me close, and then we're gonna break out. I'll be right over here to entertain questions that you may have. Andy will be here, and we'll have the sheriff and Hunter Bell, our structured protection specialist, over here. But I do wanna, I do wanna pull the curtain back on a couple of things real quick. We are gonna be in transition. We are transitioning from a Type 3 incident management team to a Type 1 incident management team. That will be effective at 05:30 tomorrow morning. But let me pull the curtain back, as I said, just a little bit. And some days ago, I reviewed a document of leader's intent that was issued to me. And then upon review of that and accepting that responsibility, I signed a delegation of authority. And that gives me authority to, to manage this incident within that leader's intent that's issued to me. Now, when I sign on that, I want you to understand that is actually a proxy signature. The signature I put on there is for every firefighter assigned to this incident. I take on that responsibility to provide for their safety and ensure the effectiveness of their efforts on the fire ground. To that end, in a, in my first briefing, I'll just share with you, it's a little personal, but let me share this with you. So you'll know what kind of leaders you have leading these guys on the fire ground. And that is a, it's a verse out of the Bible. "While I'm not going to stand up here and preach, I'm not gonna force my faith on you, but I cannot deny my faith either. And this has guided me throughout my entire life." That verse is Luke 1248. The verse starts out, "To whom much is given, much is required." Each of us on this fire have been given opportunity and the training and the skill set to do a job. To whom much is given, we've been given much, therefore much is required. We're called to accept inherent risk. We are required to mitigate risk on the fire ground, but we're called to accept inherent risk and stand in the gap. What people don't really often realize is there's a semicolon in that verse. The second part of that verse is, "To whom men entrust much, much more is demanded." If you don't think I take that seriously, you're fooled. So I just want to assure you that we are considering every option we have. Has there been backburning? Yes. Is it intentional? Yes. There was a wind event that pushed it down on Cougar, towards Cougar, I'm sorry, also presented the spot fires in Squaw. If we bring fire down slope on our terms, because we do not have the number of resources to go direct on this, that is the most effective, highest probability option that we have right now for success. And as we get more resources in, we will be able to progress. The tempo, you can ask our folks in our command and general staff. I instructed them the other day that our tempo needed to slow because we do not have the resources to completely keep up with it. So we had to slow the tempo. And so therefore, as we get more resources in, we will adjust that tempo. But then again, I do not want to, this to go very fast. And the reason being is because if we do this firing on our terms, you've seen the pictures that we posted on Facebook, probably. You've seen pictures, you've seen it in your backyard. When we can do firing, especially nighttime firing, when the, the sun is off of it, the humidity's a little higher, the fire effects are much more moderated. And that is our highest probability of success. Again, as we get additional resources in and we seek out opportunity in the fire environment, we will look to shrink the footprint as much as we possibly can. With that, we'll go ahead and close. And like I said, myself, I'll be right over here. Andy will be here. And then Hunter and the sheriff will be over by the, the board there to speak about objectives. Thank you very much.